We are one day from recess, ladies and gentlemen. Let me just say, the most important aspect of this meeting is 24 hours. Let me open with a couple of observations. One was our meeting between the Transportation Committee and Fairfax's transportation leaders last week, and I want to share with you, I thought it was a total success. It demonstrated that our two counties can indeed come together and talk about issues that are really among the most important issues our two jurisdictions face. The number-one quality-of-life issue used to be traffic. Pepco, of course, is giving them a run for their money, but no, on a serious vein, traffic is a serious issue for both of our jurisdictions. And it's an issue that our jurisdictions need to take the lead, if you will, in solving. I think both of our jurisdictions have felt that our states have not paid the same level of attention to this issue as our respective jurisdictions have. And therefore, we need to control our own destiny more and come up with some of our solutions and see if we can sell these solutions to our respective state leaders, rather than waiting for our state leaders to share with us their perspective. Clearly, the American Legion Bridge is the most visible symbol of what links us and what is a problem. And that problem will only intensify because of the work going on the Virginia side to create more capacity. So we need to have a conversation about what we can do about the bridge. We need to have a conversation about what we can do to promote more mass transit options, particularly rapid transit options, in that corridor to see if we can serve our two communities better, because the number of single occupancy vehicles is too many, single occupancy vehicles. And so we need to find alternative ways for people to get to where they want to get to. It's a complicated situation, because obviously, people use the Beltway for lots of things, not simply going between Montgomery County and Fairfax. But there's certainly an identifiable portion of commuters that do that, and therefore, we need to see if we can just make a smidgen of change with respect to that. I often comment that it really is almost a 7 percent solution that we're looking for, because if you look at what happens in August around here, it is suddenly, things become manageable. It's not a big change, but it's a change that changes people's quality of life. So if we can find ways to get just a fraction of the people off the road, we will have done yeoman's service. So this was the beginning of a conversation. We've instructed our staff to come up with some particulars to move forward, and I am confident that we will have more conversations going forward. So I was pleased with it. It showed that it really wasn't that hard for our jurisdictions to talk to one another. It was respectful and collegial, and so I'm encouraged by the conversation. So that's on the big level, and now I have to be a district council member for a moment. You may not know that Forbes Magazine has just said that Bethesda is one of the 17, top 17 coolest places in America to live. That's a nice thing. So as someone who represents Bethesda, what drove Forbes to that conclusion was the support for our arts community, the support for our recreation, the number of parks that we have, and that a ton of people are moving into Bethesda, because the quality of life is so wonderful and it's a cool place to live. And guess what? White Flint is going to be a cool place to live, too. So we're building on our success, and I feel very good about that. With that, I'll just turn it over to you guys and see what's on your mind.
With regard to the transportation meeting on Wednesday, I believe there was a brief mention of a larger transport transit network that would be large and highway-bound. Is there any topic about?
I do know that there's reference to what Womata is looking at.
It's not Womata, but COG. The COG Transportation Planning Department has been studying 500-mile...
For the region, yes.
For the region, but it was mostly highway-bound, and I was curious as to what you thought of this proposal.
I'm not familiar enough with it, Rachel, to really pass judgment on it.
Okay.
It hasn't been presented to me, per se. It's probably before TPB, our Transportation Planning Board, operation of COG, but it's not something that has been integrated into the county's plans, per se. We need to have that conversation ultimately, but it isn't have a direct bearing on what we're doing, except for perhaps that piece.
Okay. Well, one of the major barriers to any transit network that would be region-wide would be getting the different state legislators on board. Do you have any thoughts on essentially convincing Maryland officials that that's what needs to be the approach?
Well, I actually thought that that meeting that I just described was a step in that direction. I do think that if you could imagine if Fairfax and Montgomery County bitter rivals in many respects, become collaborators on the single biggest quality-of-life issue that our two communities face, if we become collaborators and come up with our plan, I think that has a better chance of success in convincing our respective states that this is a path to follow. So that's part of the goal of prompting these kinds of conversations, to see what the political fallout is if we were able to achieve some consensus among ourselves.
With the Colsar bill, as you mentioned to me that you did bring up the question we posed on making people aware, posting signs at Gunners Lake and Montgomery Village, what was the answer to that?
The answer to that was that it does not pose a public safety, public health risk in the water. That's the answer that our Department of Environmental Protection gave us.
I guess I'm kind of confused. Would it, is it a carcinogen if it does, or doesn't it?
Where it poses, where it becomes problematic is in the sediment, where it's compressed and where we try to dispose of it.
Okay.
So that's what created the difficulty in the first instance. They brought it up as sediment.
Okay.
And then they said, well, we need to dispose of this, and they looked at what was in it, and the state said, "Not here, thank you very much." And so then we began to realize that something was amiss. So that's what drove it. But in their professional judgment, this does not pose a public health risk. We've asked them to make sure that that's the case. And of course, we don't control that particular lake as a county. That's owned by Montgomery Village, so that's in part their responsibility with respect to their citizens. We don't control the signage.
What about Gunners Lake? Is that controlled by the county?
I'm sorry, I just, I don't know the answer.
Okay. So basically, as long as it's sitting down there, it's okay.
That's correct.
But when you dredge it, that's when it becomes a problem.
Exactly.
Okay.
Hi, Elliot Francis, WMU.
Yes, sir.
Let's talk about Bill 1912 for a second. At the press conference about an hour ago, Stockholm Trump's woman, Urban, and she expressed concern over the fact that the, that it was pulled from the agenda tomorrow.
Yes.
And also said that she thought part of the reason was that you were feeling some pressure from entities who just did not want to see this bill passed.
The only pressure I felt was from a majority of my colleagues, who came to me and said they felt that there was more time necessary in order to explore potential amendments. I represent the will of the body. I'm president of the council. My own position with respect to this has been clear from the beginning. I'm not, I'm not a supporter of this legislation.
What happened?
Well, one, I would say to you that I have not been shown that custodial staff, low-income workers, we have a lot of low-income workers in Montgomery County. We have custodial staff. We have waitstaff. We have lots of low-income workers in our county. The case has never been made to me as to why one small subsection of our low-income workforce is entitled to protections that a waitstaff doesn't have. And I pushed for examples, apocryphal situations, as to what has happened that justifies this. And over the course of many years, they have pointed to one particular situation. So, one, I haven't been convinced that it is a serious problem in Montgomery County that demands a solution. Two, I haven't been able, in my own mind, to understand why it is that this subset of low-income workers deserve protection that no other low-income workers should get. So, and I believe that it, at the end of the day, puts Montgomery County in legislating matters that the private sector basically, I think, for the most part, does just fine handling.
Some people might say that any group of low-income workers deserves that kind of consideration. And I, and I think I hear what you're saying. You would like a broader approach, but why not cover one, if not 10?
Well, because quite frankly, I haven't seen the need to cover even the one. So, for example, this bill has been applied to hotel workers in Los Angeles. It's applied to other workers, other places. It has been applied where a particular union has come forward and said, "We want you to pass this." And I understand, I actually think SEIU is a great union, and I think they, they do good work. I don't think this is good public policy, and I don't think it's my role as a legislator to assist a union in its organizing efforts. And quite frankly, I believe that that's what this is. This is to help SEIU in organizing. And so I get that they're a good union. I want them to be successful, but I don't want to adopt what, in my judgment, is bad public policy to assist them. And I haven't been convinced that on a policy level, this is the right thing to do.
So going full circle, it's safe to say that you pulled it from the agenda yesterday, not only because of the sentiments of your colleagues, but also your sentiments as well.
No, I would not. Let me be real clear with you. I was prepared to vote. I put it on the agenda, notwithstanding the fact that the committee was meeting today on it, which was extraordinary in and of itself. And let me make one other observation. There's no emergency situation that suggests that because, that we need to act in this moment in time. The bill is being heard in committee today. To take it up tomorrow before the full council is an extraordinary thing in and of itself. So you ask yourself, is this the way responsible legislators legislate, go about their business, taking a controversial issue that's being acted on by a committee on Monday and bringing it immediately to the full council on Tuesday? There are times when we need to do that. In my judgment, this isn't one. This isn't an emergency situation calling out for, "We've got to act in this moment. We're going on recess. People want a time to explore amendments." I think that's a reasonable request. This has nothing, let me make it real clear, nothing to do with me. I would vote against this if it were taken up tomorrow, and I'd be very comfortable. I've been clear about that from the beginning. But when a supermajority of my colleagues come to me and say they are not ready to vote on this matter, that's my job, as council president.
Could you distinguish this from the nanny bill? Because one could argue that also targets this very specific type of worker. It provides, semi-collective bargaining rights to these people. It's supposed to ensure labor protection. I'm wondering, what's the difference between those two things?
Victor, it's a fair question, but my memory of the nanny bill is that it basically was a voluntary requirement. There are no penalties, there are no sanctions with respect to that bill.
There's one.
Okay, so, but it's been a while. It's been a long time since I've looked at that bill. So I just share with you, I think that this is a different kettle of fish.
In that it's mandatory, would making a voluntary change the game, do you think, in terms of the call?
Well, it's certainly a legitimate conversation. I mean, there are colleagues who want to explore a range of amendments, I'm told. So again, the matter's being taken up today in committee. If it doesn't get acted on, I assume it won't, on the council tomorrow, we'll come back in September, there'll be lots of time. Again, in the absence of, "We have to get this done now." Why? We really don't. We need to be respectful of the desire of my colleagues to go about their business in a professional and thoughtful way. That's our fundamental responsibility to our citizens, to act thoughtfully. I don't, I don't get that this, that that schedule, given the desire of my colleagues to explore alternatives, is a thoughtful way to do it.
I hate to go back to the storms and everything, but there's been something that was brought up to me, was that this state is actually working on their emergency response systems. And I've also noticed that Verizon has started their own thing with sending out immediate alerts to their subscribers. Is the county in any way going to be taking a look at maybe upgrading our system?
This has been a cause celebre of your, of your publishers. So we've had these conversations. I don't believe that we're going to air raid sirens, which is, I believe, had been.
Sirens is not exactly what I'm trying to get into.
Okay.
But in any way, like with our, you know, Montgomery Alert or our website and stuff, are we doing anything to make that better right now?
I think our alert system actually works pretty well. So I'm not, I would need to know more as to what the failings are with respect to our alert system, and we can't force people to sign up for them, but they're, they're pretty, pretty informative.
Well, clearly, we're only still reaching a fraction with having, I think it's 250,000 are the number of people subscribed currently to Alert Montgomery. So since we're only still reaching a fraction, are we going to be doing something else or upgrading our alert system in any way to be reaching more people within the county?
I'm not aware of other steps that are being contemplated.
Is it something that may be being discussed, or something that is going to be brought up in light of the recent storms?
Again, I've answered the best of my ability. This is a new conversation that, there may be conversations taking place. It's a big county, and a lot of people talking about a lot of things, but I'm not in that loop. Councilmember Andrews, who's been really terrific leading on these sets of issues, would be a better source for you to talk to.
How did you feel that the last meeting went, though, with meeting with Chris Voss and with emergency response at the county meeting?
I thought it went very well.
Okay.
I have a question on the storm. It's been 30 days, and I believe Pepco has to follow up for it for 30 days. Have you received any updates on that?
I have not. I'm not high on their list of people that they, that file. But you know that there's going to be a public hearing on August 7th. I've met with a number of citizens' organizations that are grassroots organizations that seem to be forming, and I believe they will be here in force on August 7th. So I think it's going to be one of those important moments where the commission hears directly from the people with respect to their concerns. Of course, you know that our county participates as a formal intervenor in these investigations, and so our county, I am sure, will be pressing its case as well. Let me say one of the things that struck me in the Chris Voss briefing that I don't think got, with the greatest respect, enough attention by you folks. And that was the percentage, or the number, the absolute number of critical care facilities that were out in Montgomery County compared to the other jurisdictions at a particular moment in time. And I believe the slide was something to the effect of, on Monday, we had 56 critical care facilities out of service, and the District of Columbia had two. And Prince George's County, I believe, had eight. Don't hold me to these precise numbers, but orders of magnitude. And the question that I have, and I hope that the Public Service Commission will ask, is, were Pepco's crews allocated in proportion to the damage, or were there other agendas taking place?
I know, I had actually, I've heard you say that, and I had also written about it, but the answer that Chris Voss had given you really wasn't straightforward. He never said that he particularly did pose that question to the PSC or pose that question to Pepco. Has, and he said that he would follow up. Have you heard from him on, have you talked to the PSC or to Pepco on, did they allocate them correctly, or are they going to change it?
Well, that's, to me, that's one of the critical issues in the investigation that's been opened into how Pepco responded. So from my perspective, it's not whether or not Chris Voss asked a particular question. It is, how did Pepco allocate its resources? And my belief is that Pepco did not allocate its resources in proportion to where the damage was most severe. And that, to me, is a problem.
Well, I hate to put this on the county and everything, but from what Chris was saying, they were going, the emergency response management and Pepco were going back and forth during this entire storm. There was clearly a conversation. Don't you think that this should have been a question he should have brought up then?
Well...
Like, in the heat of the moment, hey, we have 56, like, critical facilities out. They only have eight. Can you get us more?
Well, we don't know their numbers at that moment in time. And so, honest to gosh, no. Let me be real clear with you. It is Pepco's responsibility, in my judgment, to allocate its crews where they are most needed.
Okay.
Now, the District of Columbia regulates Pepco. So Pepco has a financial interest in making sure that the District of Columbia is taken care of. Okay? I don't know, and Pepco is also very strong in Prince George's County. So, but it just flies in the face of, to me, how is it that we could have 56 units out of power when the District of Columbia has only two, unless we are getting 90 percent of the crews? If we were getting 90 percent of the crews, okay, I'm done. My belief is, we weren't. My belief is that there was an allocation that put Montgomery County at a disadvantage at a time when it was the county, the jurisdiction, greatest in need. Now, if this were reversed, and the District of Columbia had 56 critical care facilities out, and we only had two, I'd be saying, "I'm sorry, Pepco crews, what are you doing here? Take care of the people who need the most help." I'm just not certain that that's what happened here.
Can you do me a favor and define critical care facilities? What are we talking about?
We're talking about nursing homes. Okay, we're talking about senior citizens, we're talking about hospitals, we are talking about the most vulnerable of the most vulnerable. So that is a list that we work with Pepco on, and we identified, we said, "Pepco, these facilities are without power. This has to be your priority." And Pepco says, "That's fine, that's our priority, but if they only have 10 crews assigned to Montgomery County, that priority is not going to be addressed in any time soon." So the question is, did we have 10 crews? Did we have 20 crews? What proportion of the total crews were allocated to Montgomery County?
So Roger, would it be fair to say that you're going to be looking at both reports, the DC and the Maryland, because they're both coming out today at my understanding? And what other data are you looking at, maybe these reports that they're going to be showing with respect to one of those issues?
Well, clearly, restoration times is going to be one of the critical sets of issues. And that's something that is going to take a little deeper inquiry, particularly because you're going to want to see what happened in Virginia. You'll recall that Congressman Van Hollen put forth an analysis that shows that Dominion Power was much faster. So why is that? So the critical issues are crew allocation, it seems to me, how much time it took for them to restore power, and whether they were organized. We hear so much anecdotal information from the crews that come up on the scene, and they'll have six crews from, if you will, Canada or wherever. And they're just looking around going, "This is so poorly organized." And they'll be sitting there in front of a live wire, and residents will come out and say, "Can you do something about this wire?" And they go, "No, all we're authorized to do is call it in. We're not authorized to do it." So you have all those sets of issues, as to how effective were they at managing this? Then, of course, you have all the issues with customer communications. And I don't need to go there on, on how bad that was. So all those are the types of things that I am assuming that the commission will look at.
So now that the commission is supposed to be looking at these, what are we doing as a county to make sure that this particular situation is brought to the PSC, that this particular thing is going to be investigated and fixed for the next term?
And again, remember that we are formal participants in this process, so we are, it isn't our turn, if you will, in this moment, right? So they've opened this investigation, they've called on the utility to provide its data. Our county will be reviewing the data that's supplied, and at the appropriate time, we will be making a formal filing with the commission, at which point, we will advise the commission of what our point of view is on these matters.
Okay.
Okay? So that is, that's a regulatory process, and it's got its processes. So the first is, you launch the investigation. The second is, you hear from the public. The third is, in this instance, I'm surprised that they're hearing from the public so shortly after Pepco's filing, but, okay. So Pepco files, then the public hears, and then there's proceedings at, in Baltimore, in which we will be participating.
In Forbes today, there was a write-up in which Councilwoman Elrich was talking about the need for public power. Is there any progress being made on that? The last we heard, there was a county attorney memo that was challenging the county's ability to do that.
Yes. What, again, good memory, Rachel, the county attorney's opinion was that since the state legislature granted Pepco its franchise, that the state legislature would have to authorize us to revoke it, if you will. So the conversation I've been having with our state legislators is, would they consider enabling legislation, not requiring, not setting, saying that there will be public power, but to create the option for Montgomery County if it does its due diligence and finds that it's financially feasible and that the people want it? I would require a referendum to allow us to proceed. It's clear that's going to be a heavy lift. There's just no question that politically, that will be a heavy lift. So I don't know what its prospects are, but I'm one of those that continue to believe that it is something that ought to be seriously explored. The commission, in its order, spoke to the fact that this is a monopoly that has basically taken care of its shareholders. And I think it's fair for us to say, in a world in which reliability is the number-one requirement of a distribution-only utility, does public power actually do that better? And the answer is yes. Nationally, public power has greater reliability than investor-owned utilities.
How do you know that?
American Public Power Association. And there are various forms. Again, part of the conversation where things get cross-threaded is people assume that public power is government-run power. Well, we have a form of public power in Southern Maryland, not exactly a hotbed of radical liberalism. It's called Southern Maryland Electric Co-op. It's owned by the people. It's a cooperative. It is more reliable than Pepco. It doesn't have responsibility to shareholders. It doesn't have a holding company that it's accountable to. Its only job is to serve its customers. That would be a wonderful thing, if Pepco's only mission was to serve its customers. So I continue to believe it is something that's worthy of serious exploration, and quite frankly, it's the only thing, it's not the only thing, but it is one way in which you pose a, quote, "competitive threat." This is a monopoly. If we had the capacity to say, you know, "If you, as a monopoly provider, abuse your monopoly rights, we have the basis to kick you out." Without that, you're stuck. So it needs to either be very effectively regulated, or it needs to be subject to the threat of competition. Public power is one of those.
But obviously, this is off the contingent on, like you said, support from the state legislature. Have you, do you have any gauge at all of how many, at least of the delegation, the county delegation, is in support of this idea, or...
Have not. I've shared with you my bottom-line assessment, is I think it'll be a heavy lift.
Okay.
Okay?
Going on to Annapolis, what do you want, you personally want out of the gambling deal?
Well, what I want is for our legislators to understand that Montgomery County has significant transportation needs. I appreciate that the governor believes that this is an issue that just needs to be done with. Well, there are other issues that, from Montgomery County's perspective, need to be addressed, and that's our transportation needs. So as between gambling and transportation, which do I think is more significant to our county? Just no question about it. We need our transportation needs to be addressed. I don't know if they need to be addressed in this gambling bill, but what they need to be addressed, there's no question, they need to be addressed. So our county shared with our delegation our views that that's the most important priority for the county, and we hope that they will keep that in mind as they decide their course of action with respect to this legislation.
So you, but just going back, you don't think there needs to be some sort of tranchetation funding ahead of that gambling?
What I would say to you is, I'm not in Annapolis, so I don't know what's possible and what isn't possible in the context of this kind of legislation, a special session. We've been told that the legislature and the... We've been told that the legislature and the special session won't deal with anything other than gambling, okay? That no other issue will be taken up. So, I'm not there, I'm not part of the leadership, so I can't tell you how this will play out. What we wanted to have a conversation about is, this remains our priority, and our hope is that in whatever manner they can advance that priority, we hope they will do so.
And when you say transportation, can you be a little bit more specific?
Well, with the greatest respect, our transportation needs are so big that, you know, all of them have to be addressed. We continue to be frustrated by the lack of funding to support our major transportation projects. My hope is that at a certain point in time, if they decide that they can't go forward with a state sales tax, or a state gasoline tax, that at some point, they allow local jurisdictions to, again, control their own destiny. So, we have to be able to move forward, and this just hasn't happened yet. So, we're going to keep pushing, and we'll take what we can get, okay? We need, we have a lot of needs.
If you're in the top three transportation projects you want done?
Well, obviously, we've got the huge projects, okay? We've got the Purple Line, we've got the CCT, okay? We're moving forward with Rapid Transit. So, those are the three mega projects that we are all in the hopper now. So, we're going to need a lot of transportation funding.
What's going to happen with the Danish organization this year tomorrow?
I would assume, I haven't had an opportunity, so when you asked what's going to happen, I've had some conversations with respect to it. Our options on annexation is quite limited. Our county cannot say no to annexation, which, quite frankly, I find to be a little peculiar. It's only if the property owners support it, and the city wants to do it. The county's only option with respect to this is whether or not we approve rezoning or say no to rezoning. I think in this instance, rezoning seems to make the most sense if it is indeed going to be annexed, such that it could go forward with commercial uses but not residential because of its location. So, I don't see lots of options, again, without having spoken with my colleagues with respect to it, it hasn't come to the forefront.
And the buses, The Washington Post has a report about $12 million. Are we getting insurance money for the old buses? How is that working?
I've had conversations with our executive branch with respect to this, and shared with them my own view that we ought to be going after this particular vendor, we should be going after this vendor legally. That I just don't understand how it is that they can provide this, buses that catch fire, okay? And if it was one bus, you'd say, "Ah, okay." If it's two buses, you'd say, "Ah, that's weird." After that, it's not weird, it's not okay. And that's what lawsuits are for. I really feel like we ought to be all over these people. We shouldn't have to be spending this money.
With respect to that, though, when Womada found that their buses were catching fire, it took two fires for them to pull the buses from the road. It took six fires on this particular type of bus for Montgomery County to do the same? Why the wait?
Rachel Bay, you and I had this conversation. So, they came before us, our county did. I asked for a hearing on this very point, in part because our bus drivers were saying, "This isn't fun, this isn't safe. I shouldn't have to get into a bus that I am worried about catching on fire." And quite frankly, I agreed. And the county executives' people came before us and said, "One, the reason why Womada could do that is because they've got a lot more buses. They could afford to take those buses out. If we take buses out, we are going to have to cut service, so we don't want to do that unless it's absolutely necessary." Again, Womada doesn't have that problem. What you saw when we took the bus out initially is, we had to go to Saturday service, because we don't have enough buses to take that many out and perform what we were told, our service to our people. So, the county executives' people and the Department of Transportation came in, and they said, "We feel like we've inspected every one of these buses, we feel like we've got a handle on it, we feel like they're safe."
Do you think the county executive in a conversation that I had with him, only to a parts of training problem with bus drivers, that the bus driver didn't pull over immediately when he saw a warning light go on, do you think that training problem exists?
I can't speak to whether that training problem exists, but in that particular situation, would it have been better for the bus driver, once the warning light came on, to just pull over, get on the phone and saying, "This just happened, I'm going to leave the bus here, you guys tow it in?" Yes, that would have been better.
The problem that was a little too, was if this training exists, but he ignored it? Is there, do you know if there's just a kind of reaction, anything kind of?
I don't know.
Okay.
What else, gang?
Did you have thoughts on the amendments that Councilman Levin Paulson should be seeing committee today, with the original bill, nineteen or twelve?
I haven't seen the amendments.
Okay. And you're going on recess, can you tell us what's going to come up after a recess?
I wish I could. I confess, it is all I can do to get through tomorrow. Our press person had one point in promoting today's conversation, saying, "The councilman, the council president will tell you about the fall agenda." I can tell you about my summer agenda, and I can't tell you about the fall agenda right now. But, so, I really, I wish I could project forward. We've got a number of controversial items coming before us. Clearly, accessory apartments, for example, will be part of that conversation. This legislation on displaced workers will be part of that conversation. I hope to be making progress with Pepco on having a maintenance, an agreement, a memorandum of understanding on trees. So, we're going to have a full list, including, at some point, we're going to get the zoning rewrite from our planning board. So, we have a number of planning, major initiatives. We're going to have a full fall agenda.
Can I bring you back to the tree issue just one more time?
Yes.
Again, there was legislation that's been, basically, it's-
Been put on hold.
Yeah, but why is that? I mean-
Why that is, is because I ultimately concluded, or actually, why it is, was told by our county attorneys, that our county has very little authority over trees that are in Pepco's right-of-way. So, legislating seems to me to be a second option at that point. So, if we can reach a voluntary agreement, a memorandum of understanding, that achieves some positive outcomes, that seems to me to be a better way to proceed. I've shared that desire with Pepco. I shared that desire with the chairman of the Public Service Commission. He indicated that they would participate. So, if we can bring the arborists together, if we can bring Pepco together, the Public Service Commission together, some community leaders together, and see if we can reach a memorandum of understanding, much like the city of Rockville has, much like Tacoma Park has, then I feel like we've advanced the equation without moving forward with legislation that ultimately might be found to be unlawful.
I'll just say that council will be on recess. We won't have regular Monday news conferences until September, but if an issue or something comes about, we'll work with Council President Perlener to have a news conference as needed.
Just on that note, if, what's going to happen with any referendum that might be approved next month? Are you guys going to be sitting down at all and or discuss these?
Yes, we always leave in the middle of August time for us to get together, either by phone or otherwise, and I think we've got August 15th scheduled, I believe, or the Wednesday, the middle of August, to see if there are actions that we need to take with respect to referendums.
But by phone, though?
Well, no, actually, we're, it's contemplated that there'll be an, so we'll be here on the 15th, if needed, for that purpose. Thanks, guys.